I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, do you want to come up? Yep, come on up and if you just want to say your name, reintroduce yourself.
Robert Conz, order of course.
Yes.
And so, the paperwork is all in order this time?
Everything's in order and we have his green card.
We have the green cards, right.
Serious green cards.
Alright, that sounds good. And, um, everything going well?
Very well. Very well, other than keeping up with the enormous traffic on Friday night, we're doing very well.
Well, that's a good problem.
It's a good problem.
Alright, well, very good. Anyone have any questions?
Nope.
No.
Alright, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, four zero zero.
Make a motion to approve the annual wine and malt license for crisp.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, four zero zero. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
And then, we will go to Ashley.
Good evening, Ashley Clark with Community Development. Um, so I have like a three-part presentation and we can kind of dial it up or down however this board wants. Um, the first part is a presentation on the Summer Street 40B project that we received an application for. Uh, part of the statute requires all boards and commissions be notified that you've received it, that we've received a 40B application. Uh, so what I'd like to do is kind of review it at a high level. The materials were sent to you, so hopefully you've had the chance to familiarize yourself a little bit with them. Um, but really, I'd like to get comments from this board and what I'd like to do is put together a draft comment letter to provide to the ZBA. Um, so, we can jump into that one first and then get into the other two if that works. So, planners kind of talk and jargon a lot, so I did a quick glossary so that everyone can hopefully follow along with what I'm saying. Uh, when I mention affordable unit, I'm talking about capital A affordable, so there's some regulatory mechanism for why that unit is there. Um, when I say SHI, I'm referring to subsidized housing inventory. Um, housing units, I'm referring to the number of units that's determined by the census. Uh, ten percent is that magic number everyone's talking about. Uh, DHCD, of course, is the Department of Housing and Community Development. Um, MHP is the Mass Housing Partnership, they're a state organization that we work with. Um, and then IZB, of course, is Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. So, does anyone have any questions about, okay, I just feel bad when I talk in all these acronyms, so. Um, really, the goal, as I mentioned, is to get comments, to put in a comment letter to send to the ZBA. Um, and just to give you a little bit of context, the ZBA's purview is looking at all local regulations such as zoning, subdivision control, local wetlands, septic systems, and so on. Um, there are things that are certainly not in the ZBA's purview, so it's helpful to kind of tailor your comments to the things that the ZBA actually does have purview over. So, during the PEL phase, the town gave a response letter, which is really a best practice that MHP encourages. Um, it gives a chance for the subsidizing agency to see the town's concerns and so on. And then, they issue this golden ticket letter to the developer that allows them to come in and apply with an application. So, we've received an application for, um, three hundred dwelling units that are split into really three different building types. We've got garden-style rentals, uh, town home style rentals, and single-family homes. And I went ahead and, um, included renderings of what these buildings are kind of proposed to look at. So here, the single-family homes, the town homes, um, the multifamily homes, I'm sure you've seen similar renderings already. Uh, and then I broke it down into the unit composition. Uh, so, total for the project, there are two hundred and twenty-five market rate units proposed, seventy-five of which are, um, will be affordable. And that's at eighty percent area median income, so eighty percent AMI. And I just did a quick slide to kind of show what, what that means to be at eighty percent AMI. The, um, HUD puts together the income limits and this is what you're looking at based on family size. So, for a family of two, the income limit is seventy-one thousand, four hundred dollars. The, for this project, and this is based on the PEL application that was submitted, but the rents are looking at around fifteen forty-seven for a one-bedroom at the affordable rate and nineteen fifty for the market rate. And it's broken down for the rental units here. Uh, I also broke it down for the, um, sales prices. So, for the affordable two-bedroom, you're looking at about two hundred forty thousand dollars for the affordable unit and four hundred sixty for the market rate unit. And for some local context, the median rent in 2016 was about twelve hundred dollars. So, concerns that, uh, the select board had during the PEL phase had a lot to do with neighborhood context. So, a concern about introducing a really high level of density where there's not. Um, there are a lot of environmental concerns that were addressed, wetlands, contamination, it's a really sensitive site. Um, school considerations were also addressed, um, at the ZBA level, that's not something that they can address. Um, and then, traffic and public safety were huge ones. Um, so again, your, your role in the ZBA, uh, it's, it can be really helpful to give them comments to think about as they move forward in reviewing this project. And so, just again, a list of some issues that have been identified and we'll certainly comb through the application and all of the materials and do a thorough review of all the issues that at least the ZBA can, uh, review. And so, just to recap, I went through that kind of quickly, but, um, again, comments under what the ZBA can actually look at are really helpful. Um, a summary of concerns that the select board had during the PEL period. And then, I'd like to just open up to discussion with you. I have more slides that talk about, um, like, safe harbor and what this project means for that, so I'm happy to get into that as well if you'd like, but.
Can you go back one slide first and then, uh, maybe move on to that if that's on, so, um. Is, is there any mechanism for getting off-site improvements to either traffic or, um, space, um, around, around the project?
So, I did have. So, you can't, you can, uh, through the 40B review process, you can talk about things that are impacted at that very specific project level. So, yes, if, if someone's saying this is a very pedestrian-friendly neighborhood, but when you look at the actual existing conditions, that's not the case. So, where there aren't sidewalks and necessary infrastructure, that's certainly a conversation that can happen at the ZBA level.
And does that include traffic or like road, uh, reorientation and things like that or?
So, to address traffic, we're going to have a traffic peer reviewer, someone whose expertise is literally just looking at traffic. So, um, they'll give recommendations on, on how to mitigate the impacts of this specific project. There are projects where that does include, you need to fix, you know, X, Y, and Z rotary, or this curb cut, or these. So, um, in those cases, we'd rely heavily on the peer review, who works for the town in those cases. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Am I hearing that that's a concern that you'd like included in this?
Well, yeah, you know, certainly that, um, the South Walpole Common Area, the, the traffic flow there is dangerous already, especially at the end of Washington Street, taking the left towards Route One. And then, the way that the lineup is between Summer and Washington with that little, the, the roads don't come right across from each other. There's a little, it's set a little off. So, that creates some issues with the movement of the vehicles. And, um, so I, I, it's certainly, I don't know if there's a way to resolve that, but, um, there's certainly a lot of ways to, things that we could look at, um, as far as, um, not having cars have to cross each other as many times.
To add on to what David was talking about, when we did the site visit out there, we also talked about the sidewalk problem. Um, there are kids who walk or ride their bikes through that area, um, and at some point, they're going to be forced to cross over the street uh, on their way to Boyd. And there was some discussion about can the sidewalks be cleaned up all the way back, um, to the new development and make it easier and safer for the kids, as well as clean up that triangle and make that flow better. Like, it, it, that's a tough intersection when traffic is busy already, it will get much worse. Especially when trains, you know, when the gates go down for a train, everything's going to gridlock. And I'm especially worried about the kids, kids on bikes, kids walking.
And to add train safety, I'm really worried about inside the development on that side of the road. You know, they had done a lot kind of heading towards the stadium, but not on the other side. We all set? Move on?
Great, so I will put these together and draft a letter for you and I'll, I'll work with Jim on getting that to you so you can approve it at your next, uh, meeting.
Great.
So, I, and this is up to you, if you'd like me to go into kind of how we're proposing to manage this project. Um, or, and talk about, you know, implications for safe harbor, um, or we could do that at another time. I just wanted to let you know, I'm ready to answer any of those questions that.
Um, I think based on our agenda, you could go another ten minutes?
Okay, so.
How's that sound?
Okay, I'll just go through these slides really quickly and make them available to any resident who's like, I'm sorry, I don't understand what just happened. Twenty slides later.
That sounds good.
Um, so, this project, I think we've got a, a really good, solid team that's going to be working with us. We've applied to MHP for a technical assistant, Judy Barrett, who did a presentation in October on 40Bs. She's really top-notch, she is great to work with. Uh, we're also working with town council. We will be requesting that the ZBA bring these expert peer reviewers. The peer reviewers work for the town, the developer pays for those costs, but they are doing the examining through our lens. Um, design peer review is going to be really important. Um, another thing that I think will be helpful are to have work sessions where we can all sit down at a table and talk through some of these issues outside of the ZBA hearing. Those are publicly noticed, so folks can come and listen. And certainly, there'll be a report given at the next hearing about what happened at those meetings to make sure that everything stays transparent. Um, and then, of course, collaboration with, uh, other town departments. We've set up a webpage that is going to be really important to folks who want to kind of keep up to date and find the most, uh, recent plans and so on as we move forward. It's just the normal town page forward slash 40B. We've also set up an email, that's zba@walpole-ma.gov. So, folks want to send an email to the ZBA about this page, about this project, or really anything, but, uh, they can send it there. Um, this is what the page looks like, so you would just go to this top link.
One quick question.
Yeah.
If someone is sending a comment to that email, should they be expecting an email back? Or is it just, because I know how the zoning board works, they don't communicate. Is it just a place and so that the public realizes that they get this information, but don't be expecting information back?
That's, that's a great point. One thing that we're certainly working on is providing the highest level of really customer service that we can. So, I'm glad you asked the question because we will be posting public comment letters to the town site. Um, so that folks know, yes, we did receive the letter, yes, it is on the record and you can kind of see what's going on here. Um, the grid above is actually the entire application that we received in individual PDFs. So, if anyone wants to go and see the architectural plans or the traffic impact analysis, which I think is about a seven-hundred-page document, it's all there, ready for people to, to access. So, again, and I'm also available to talk to anybody who has any questions, comments, concerns, um, that just wants to sit down and understand kind of how this process is going to unfold. Um, so there's that. And then, I have, uh, safe harbor, kind of, a lot of people have been asking, what does this mean? Does this mean we can say no to future projects? Um, there are two different ways you can get safe harbor under this project. One of them is making progress towards your state-approved housing production plan, which is why it's so important that you have a housing production plan, because without it, you don't get to, uh, claim this. So, the town needs to approve forty-five or ninety units for a one- or two-year stay. So, if the ZBA were to approve this project, um, we could see a two-year stay on accepting new applications, which might overlap with when the new census is going to come out. So, it's going to be interesting to see how it all unfolds. Um, and just to kind, I put this in here, everyone always likes to know what's going on.
Around.
Around them, so, like Sharon, and this is as of the, it's actually 2017. This list had Walpole at five-point-four percent, it's actually at seven-point-one. So, I don't know how accurate all of these are, but just to kind of have a sense. Westwood, Canton, Stoughton, Sharon, Foxborough, Rantham, uh, are, are all kind of just over that ten percent threshold. Um, and then, in terms of the ten percent, this is a question I get asked very often, are we going to get to ten percent? And it's a really complicated question to answer. Um, so, put the chicken in there, it's like, you don't count your chickens till they hatch, right? So, there's a lot of moving parts. For example, the Burns Avenue project I submitted today, our request to add eight units to the SHI. We also received notice of appeal to the Housing Appeals Committee. So, those units will have on for twelve months and if a building permit isn't issued on that project, they fall off.
They fall off.
So, it makes it this funny dance of, you know, who's on the list, who's off the list, and the timing is really delicate. But, um, and just kind of a side note, for these 40B projects, one hundred percent of the rental units get to go on our SHI, so affordable and market rate are added. That's not true of ownership. Ownership, just the twenty-five percent of the units are added, uh, which is why you start seeing math and weird things start happening. Um, so I did four different scenarios on this, kind of, to be able to show people how complicated it is to answer this. The, the purple, the purple one is showing if all three hundred units and Burns Ave go on to the SHI, but the reality is most projects lose units as they go through. So, D is if we lose just ten units. And that's in the 2010 census, so that doesn't leave, uh, this is just a side note. I used MAPC data projection, uh, population projection to do this. They do two different kinds, they do a status quo and a stronger region. I use the more conservative number to get to this. And that is that, uh, so, it's really unlikely that in 2020, when that census comes out, the town will be at ten percent. Um, so again, my contact information, I'm available to talk to folks. I, I hope that's one thing that people take away from this, is that we're here, we're available to people. Um, so that kind of summarizes the, the 40B stuff and then I have some slides on the IZB.
Alright.
Okay, should I go through these really quickly? The inclusionary zoning?
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Couple minutes.
Yeah, couple minutes.
Okay, I'm trying to go through as quick as possible.
You're going at a great pace, so.
Um, so, you are all doing your session next Tuesday, February eleventh, is that at seven PM?
Six thirty.
So, at six thirty, February eleventh, um, you're meeting to discuss and really go into this. So, I'm really just going to fly through this information.
Perfect.
And I'm here if anyone has any questions. Um, so again, uh, we're required to have ten percent housing stock, it's affordable housing units. Uh, otherwise, we're subject to these 40B applications. So, inclusionary zoning is a strategy to require developers to keep pace with that ten percent, um, eligibility for inclusion on our SHI. Sorry, mincing my words here, I'm trying to talk fast. Um, so, an inclusionary zoning bylaw is one strategy for how towns can take back local control and remove themselves from 40B applications. Um, here's a little side-by-side of inclusionary zoning in 40B. I think that the most important thing to take away from this is that, under inclusionary zoning, multifamily housing is only going to go where multifamily housing is already allowed, unlike in a 40B where you can get an apartment building in any zoning district. So, I think that's an important distinction. So, I'm repeating myself here, but I think these are really the, the key points, is that, under an IZB, your multifamily is going to stay where your multifamily is, you're not going to introduce new building uses in residential, like, single-family neighborhoods. Um, and, and IZB also allows you to, uh, build units that are within the existing character scale uses of the neighborhood. Uh, this is just a quick example of how powerful these 40B projects can be. This is about half an acre lot. This is in another town, a pretty affluent town. Um, the developer came in with sixty-two units proposed. This building here is a single-family home. And the owner, the developer got control over two lots, one at the front and one at the rear, and proposed this building wrapping around the single-family home. After a year of, about, of design review and negotiating, it got down to forty-five units. And again, the single-family home remained. So, I think it just demonstrates the power behind 40B. And then, so, the IZB that's on the warrant has ranges of affordability from ten percent to fifteen percent. Uh, and it's triggered with projects that have six or more dwelling units. Um, there's, here's the kind of list of the strategies. There's pro-rata fees, there's waivers for setbacks and buffers and parking waivers and so on. And you can kind of dig into each of those next week. Um, these are the top three questions I get for this, is like, what is this lot waiver thing? And the most important, important thing to take away here is that the average after you do the formula is really close to what is existing. So, I've heard people say, oh, you're only requiring seventy-five hundred square feet, I have a thirty thousand square foot lot, I'm going to put four units on it. That's absolutely not how this formula works out. When you do the math, um, you end up with twenty-six thousand, two hundred fifty square feet for all of the units, because you have to treat market and affordable rate the same, so. And here's just some math on how that breaks down. In order for this to get triggered, you have to start with a parcel that's three-point-six acres. So, unless you have a piece of land that's that big, you're not going to, you're not going to be developing under this bylaw. So, I just want to make that very clear, because that seems to be one of the big questions we get. More math, it's available. Uh, and there was also this question of, well, why are we doing fifteen percent when we only need ten percent? And what happens if we go outside of what we need? And what I want to demonstrate in this slide is that both projects that are triggered by the inclusionary zoning and projects that are not, are, go into that denominator of housing units that generates the formula on SHI percentage. So, this is how that kind of works out. Uh, so if you did, um, a project with five hundred units at fifteen percent, you're looking at seventy-five units. If you were at that ten percent, that five hundred unit project is going to go up point-two percent. So, just to kind of give you an idea of how hard it would actually be to get really far. Like, you're not going to end up with fifteen percent on your SHI. So, that's really the quick and fast of that. Um, hopefully, it wasn't too fast or too slow, but.
It was, I think it was great, Ashley, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you.
And we'll see you next week.
Oh, yeah, I'll be there.
Thank you.
And then, next, Liberty Village Construction Plan for Traffic Management?
So, just to kind of give a brief overview on this one, um, this is something that kind of came together, um, quickly towards the end of last week. Um, Liberty Village, Jerry LaRusso and his, uh, helper Joe Bartukas here with us today. Um, there's a proposal on the table to basically, um, move, uh, the pedestrian walkway over the other side of the street. Um, we want to do this now, on this board meeting, so we can address it during school vacation, so the kids won't be crossing the street and interfering with traffic, and I'll kind of hand it off to Carl so we can talk through it, what the plan is.
Good evening to the, uh, Chair and members of the Board, Carl Bald of, uh, Town Engineer for the record. Uh, and Jim, uh, the Town Administrator, gave a good introduction. Uh, currently, uh, Liberty Village is, as you can see, far, fairly well along with the street-side facades, uh, pretty well complete. Um, the sidewalk on, on E Street, um, is barricaded, but it's still in u, it, it, it's, uh, barriered from the street side, but it's still in use. You can walk through it like a tunnel. Uh, the developer wants to rebuild that sidewalk, therefore, they need to shift, um, pedestrian traffic over to the west side of E Street. Um, that's shown, um, roughly on the plan, on the sketch that was attached to the letter from Edgewood. Um, so, what we're really asking, uh, there was, as the letter indicates, there was a pretty good-sized meeting out there and collaboration between the DPW developer and police, um, last Thursday. So, we're asking, this is all occurring within the public way. So, we're really asking for the, uh, Board's permission and approval, um, to perform this work, um, and, you know, with details to be worked out with us. Um, obviously, if they're going to shift the traffic, uh, the pedestrians over, they have to make sure the, uh, there are temporary crossings and that road is accessible, et cetera. Um, but this needs to be done, as the letter indicates, they're scheduling it for February vacation, which would be an easier week. Uh, the road will remain open and usable, but there'll be, at times, a, a lane taken up for con, concrete trucks and various things like that. But, that's a good week to do it, because obviously, we don't have school traffic, school buses. Um, eventually, the work will continue over onto Elm Street where there's also, um, sidewalk is actually currently closed, but there are two sidewalks there already, so, um, that pedestrian traffic is shifted around. But as the developer progresses with this project, which is substantially well along, um, those are the things that need to occur and they're all occurring within the public way. So, it is this that, uh, we are asking for your approval tonight.
Great, um, anyone have any comments or concerns on the Board?
I assume you're happy with the plan, since you're involved in it.
We are, yes, and it does rely on coordination and there's been a good, uh, very good meeting and agreements made in that. It's not all outlined specifically here, but, but there's a good handle on this.
Good. I'm happy.
David?
Hi.
I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed Liberty Village Construction Plan.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. Excellent.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Yes. And then, for our seven-thirty and seven-thirty-one agenda items for the Council on Aging, um, we had a glitch on our side that, according to our own bylaws, we just didn't post the positions long enough to take applications. So, because of that, we need to not make an appointment tonight, that wouldn't be valid. And we actually, we're going to be looking over the bylaws too, right?
Yeah, we're also taking a look at the bylaws, so if you want to review the bylaws, uh, we may make some changes to them as well.
Yeah.
Uh, that will probably take up at least a month to do the bylaw review, maybe longer. Nope.
No.
Nope.
No. So, I'm sorry you guys came down and we didn't get in touch with you before, so. Alright, and so then, um, we're going to move to seven-thirty-two. Vote to change the manager of the Wine Cellar Group at five sixty-five Main Street to Enzo Ballerano. Is there, come on up, yep. You could just tell us your name.
Sure. Good evening, Enzo Ballerano, from, uh, local boy from Dedham. Uh, so I just took over for Angela, she was the manager there at the liquor store. And, uh, just started with these guys about two months ago. And hopefully, uh, can be there for a long time.
Alright, and then, um, Cindy, any, everything in order?
Everything's in order.
Alright, any Board members have any comments?
No, looks good.
Looks good, alright, I'd like to say welcome, and then I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the change of manager for the Wine Cellar Group to Enzo Ballerano.
Second?
I'll second that, sorry.
Alright, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, four zero zero. And, there you go, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And, open forum is at 7:35. We're going to go to new business, but we're going to go out of order. And I'm going to move down to make a motion to release $30,000 in cemetery care funds for the purpose of replacing a vehicle, 329, which was damaged on an accident on 12/11/19. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion?
Just a brief overview. This is kind of a unique situation. This truck was up for consideration coming next fall, but it was damaged. We actually received quite more than we expected for it. The cost to replace the truck is about $36,910. Maya's offering $7,300 in recovery. Tom Purch County found a vehicle at MHQ over Marlboro, and so that's why we're asking for perpetual care funds. The Board of Selectmen, as the cemetery commissioners control the perpetual care funds, there's currently a balance of $123,661 in there. So with the release of $30,000, we'll still have significant funds in there.
All right. Any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained?
I, I.
What?
I, I.
You're an aye, okay. 400. I'll make a motion to declare office and police and DPW equipment surplus and authorize the Town Administrator to dispose of the equipment. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 400. I'll make a motion to review and approve the 300 anniversary committee charge and committee makeup. Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 400. I'll entertain a motion for the Deputy Police Chief, Richard Kelleher, as a constable for, I'll make the motion, I'm sorry, for non-civil matters.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. 400. I'll make a motion to request the, hold on, I'm sorry. I will make a motion to request a Patriot Tavern for Q and O monitor.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think we just, we only need a motion if we're going to reject it, I guess, is what it says.
If I do not, okay.
So I, I...
I'm good with it, too.
Okay.
So I'll withdraw my motion?
Sure.
And we'll all give a head nod?
[laughing]
All right. And then I will make a motion for the Knights of Columbus for a, for three, one-day all alcohol licenses for 2820, 21520, and 22820.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to sign the Spring Town, the 2020 Spring Town warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 400. The consent agenda?
The following items will be voted as one item. There are gifts from the Walpole Cooperative Bank to the Recreation Program Scholarship in the amount of $500. From the Junior Women's Club of Walpole to the Veterans Committee, $3,500. And the following gifts are to this Council on Aging, Aging Senior Moments, from Virginia and Bill Ryan, from Carelink Inc., from Esther and George Nickerson, from Mr. and Mrs. Christopher Jackson, from Jane N.E. Hunt Berger, from Eugene Riley, from Rhode Island Quality Institute, from Lyndon and David McNally, from Nancy St. Laurent, from Donald and Josephine Bombara, from Audra Noonan, from Marjorie Sullivan Turley, from Catherine Noble, from Joanne Barrett, and from Harold Casper and Heidi Calhurt.
I'll second that with thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? 400. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 21st, 2020.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? 400. And then, the hour being 7:35. Is anyone here to speak to open forum? Nobody? We're going to move right along to staying out of, out of order. Anyone have anything for old business? And Jim, do you want to do your...
Yeah, just a couple of quick items here. Ashley mentioned the work session next week to go over the two articles for the inclusionary zoning and the housing trust. Just a reminder, we'll be meeting in 112. This room was taken by the Town Clerk's Office. MSBA, we went into Boston yesterday. We received notice today that they approved Compass Project Management. They are going to need the Board of Selectmen to also approve that. That needs to be executed by February 21st. So I'm going to ask Jim to make sure that's on your work session agenda for one of the first items next week. Summer Street 40B, Ashley mentioned that today. Their first hearing set to be March 4th at the Senior Center. And one item that's not on there, earlier this afternoon, we met with District 5 MassDOT officials to discuss the TIP project. That project's set to begin in the fall of 2020 with the utilities work, mostly consisting of the pole movement along Route 1A, and construction is supposed to get underway in 2021. The project, they say, will take three to four years, so it's going to be a long project. And we'll make sure we get plenty of sign boards and messages out there for everyone to know. But I'm going to start saying this is probably every other month or once a month, just reminding people it's coming. That's it.
Hey, Jim, it would be nice if, if they have a schedule of which block they're sort of going to work on on 1A, that we can let people know ahead of time.
We actually talked about, they're going to be giving us, I think it's bi-weekly or monthly reports, and we're going to, they're going to make it so we can, we can put it up on a website. It's accessible.
Okay, that'd be great.
I'll make sure it's on a bunch of the Facebook pages and everything, and just to keep people updated as to the schedule and everything.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. That being said, as I can as Chair, we'll go back into regular order. And since I'm going to be abstaining, I will be leaving. Good luck, Ben.
Thanks, Nancy.
Yep.
So, is sufficient votes to send my complaint? Is two votes sufficient? Because I can't vote on that one, right?
Yeah, I understand that it is.
Okay, that's fine.
That we have quorum.
Okay, that's fine.
Unless anyone had to agree otherwise.
No, I think it would be sufficient.
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine.
Okay, so the first item to go through here is the open meeting law complaint filed by David Salvatore against the Select Board alleging intentional violation of the OML. The matter of the open meeting law complaint appeared on the Board's agenda for January 7th, 2020. The original complainant, a former employee of the Town of Walpole, had filed the complaint claiming violations of the open meeting law for various reasons. Mr. Salvatore indicated to the Board, although relying on an opinion provided by council, that it had created a violation by discussing the complaint even though the complainant's name was not listed on the agenda for that meeting. So to cover a few facts and issues surrounding this, so that everybody's clear on, on bringing this information together, and that's the real purpose of this, is to get all this information in one place, the complaints and the meeting minutes, so that it's easy, easy to follow. The January 7th, 2020 meeting notice was prepared, so as to allow the Board to take up the matter of the open meeting law complaint in a timely and appropriate fashion. Subsequently, in that meeting, following a vote to appoint a new deputy police chief, the Board took up the matter of the open meeting law complaint. The complainant in the current matter, Mr. Salvatore opened the discussion by raising the issue on the meeting notice, as we described. Counsel had advised that the matter, in her opinion, could be discussed, and that if necessary, the matter could be revisited at a future meeting. And here we are. At that point, the Chair read the complaint into the minutes. Mr. Salvatore asked to be recognized, was recognized, and read a statement. Each selectman also made a statement. The Board then voted three to one to authorize Town Council to respond to the complaint in a manner consistent with that discussion. So certainly, the Board takes its obligations under the open meeting law seriously, and we need to be responsive to these issues raised by, by Mr. Salvatore as a member of the Board. So as such, the meeting notice for tonight's meeting, in addition to specifically referencing the name of the current complainant, Mr. Salvatore, and the date of his open meeting law complaint, also specifically references the name of the original open meeting law complainant, Mr. McKenzie, and the date of that complaint. The notice provides one item for consideration of Mr. Salvatore's complaint, and then one item to ratify, validate, and confirm the action taken at the January 7th, 2020 meeting to resolve the December 30th, 2020 complaint. So again, for the sake of clarity and to ensure that all of the relevant information, meeting minutes and whatnot, is memorialized appropriately and is available to not only the Board, but the town and all the residents, we're going to separate this into two motions. First, to the extent that Mr. Salvatore's complaint raises concerns about prior meeting notice, I would ask, based upon the statements made, in fact summarized here tonight, for a motion to ratify, validate, and confirm the Board's January 7th, 2020 vote to resolve the December 30th, 2020 open meeting law complaint by authorizing Town Council to file a response with the Attorney General indicating that the vast majority of the matters raised related to meetings held more than 30 days prior to the date of the complaint, and further that other matters did not raise issues under the open meeting law. And that the following action be taken. Add the minutes of the January 7th, 2020 meeting to the minutes of the current meeting, including Mr. Salvatore's written notes, and add the Board's response to the December 30th, 2019 complaint filed with the Attorney General to the minutes of the current meeting.
I'll second that. Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second that.
And, any further discussion or comment?
Nope. I think you summarized it well.
Okay. Again, I'll, I'll make a comment. The intent of this, and it was a lot of words, is to bring all of the meeting minutes and all of the complaints into one package of information, which will be summarized in the meeting minutes to this meeting tonight. So to the extent that anybody wants to walk through everything that I just said, from a date standpoint or a comment standpoint, it'll all be in there. So that, that's, that's the intent. So being no additional discussion, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
We'll give the police issue a response.
So second, with respect to Mr. Salvatore's complaint, I would ask for a motion to direct Council to prepare a response consistent with the summary of the matter already provided, deny that a violation of the open meeting law occurred based upon the particular facts at issue, and that the following action be taken to promote transparency and further the purposes of the open meeting law. First, request that the Town Clerk work with Town Council to prepare a quote-best practices, end quote, summary for the preparation of meeting agendas. And two, consistent with past practice, schedule and hold an open meeting law training for staff and boards and committees. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or discussion?
Nope.
I would add, again, a comment. The purposes of this is to acknowledge David's complaint and to be able to put all this information in place, and then to be able to learn from that going forward, to ensure that we don't have any issues or even perceived violations, that the Board, the committees, and, and the Town Clerk are all clear on the steps and procedures necessary to stay on the right side and be as transparent as possible.
Well said.
So, being that there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained? That brings us to the conclusion of the agenda for this evening.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second? Thank you.